Call this meeting to order. It's at 7:05 PM. First, I would like to thank everyone for being here. We are going to start off the meeting with the reorganization of the Town Council. And before I do that, I just want to welcome the two new members tonight. It's great to see you here on this board. And with that, part of the process is to turn it over to our senior member on the Town Council to run the organization part of this meeting. In doing so, I'd like to now turn over this meeting to our long-term member, Councilor Denise Clements.
Thank you, Mrs. San Angel. The first order of business will be the Pledge of Allegiance. If you could please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
And now, always a fun part, the swearing-in of councilors-elect. And that will be done by our town clerk, Matty Bonnades.
Thank you. We'll do it in no certain order. I'll just do it alphabetically. So if the three new councilors care to join me. Council Morales, if you'll please raise your right hand. Do you, Jorge Morales Jr., solemnly swear to perform all duties incumbent of you as a Town Councilor for the Town of Southbridge until June 30th, 2020 faithfully and impartially according to laws of the Commonwealth and abide by the Charter and bylaws of the Town of Southbridge? So help you God.
I do.
Thank you, sir. I just need you to sign. I need you to sign your name right here, please. And I also have to give you the open meeting law and the conflict of interest, which is in here. So if you would just sign your name right there, say that I gave that to you today. So there you are, sir. Congratulations to you. Council Nash? Care to raise your right hand, sir?
Glad to.
Thank you. Do you, Richard T. Nash, solemnly swear to perform all duties incumbent of you as a member of the Town Council for the Town of Southbridge until June 30th, 2020 faithfully and impartially according to laws of the Commonwealth and abide by the Charter and bylaws of the Town of Southbridge? So help you God.
Yes, I do.
Thank you, sir. If you would just sign your name right there, please. And I also need to give you the open meeting law and the conflict of interests. So if you would just sign your name right there, say it again.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Good luck to you. Thank you. Council Steves? Do you, George P. Steves, solemnly swear to perform all duties incumbent of you as a member of the Town Council until June 30th, 2020? That's not so weird. Faithfully and impartially according to laws of the Commonwealth and abide by the Charter and bylaws of the Town of Southbridge? So help you God.
I do.
Okay, so if you would just sign your name right there, please. And I also need to give you the open meeting law and the God's tailored conduct. So if you would just sign your name right there.
Has it changed since I said?
No. There you are. And congratulations to you, sir.
Congratulations to all of you and welcome. Again. Agenda item number five will be an invocation by the Reverend Michael Rondo from the Viewpoint
Thank you for this opportunity. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we humbly come before you and invoke your presence upon this reorganizational meeting. The Apostle Paul instructs us through the writings in the Book of Timothy to pray, to intercede, to give thanks for all men, especially those that are in authority. We take this moment to do this very thing, seeking your blessing upon seasoned councilors and those newly elected. Paul says that the goal of our prayer should be that we would live a quiet and peaceable life in godliness and honesty. So, Almighty God, Creator of good things, we ask for your divine favor upon Southbridge, that you grant to this town peace, godliness, honesty. Lord, you first established authority in families, and through families you developed neighborhoods and villages and communities, towns and cities and nations. Within the building of these communities, you gave giftings to men to organize and administrate, so that all things may be done decently and in order. So also, you declared that righteousness exalts a nation. Therefore, Almighty God, we invoke your presence and blessing upon the Town of Southbridge. We pray that each one in authority would be led by your presence to work in harmony and unity with one another for the good of our town, that you would grant wisdom and understanding that the decisions being made by this council would be a tremendous blessing to the Town of Southbridge. We ask that each counselor, administrator, manager would be divinely guided, encouraged, personally blessed, that the decision made by those in authority would bless all governmental departments and employees in our town. We thank you, Almighty God, for all these things. In the mighty, wonderful, exalted name of your beloved Son, Jesus the Christ, we pray tonight, and we say amen.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilor O'Clair?
Present.
Councilor Carrasco?
Present.
Councilor Clements?
Present.
Councilor DePietro?
Present.
Councilor McKenzie?
Present.
Councilor Manna?
Present.
Councilor Morales?
Present.
Councilor Nash?
Present.
Councilor Steves?
Present.
Nine present.
Thank you. We will now move on to election of the permanent chairperson. Nominations are now in order for position of council chair. Councilor McKenzie.
Thank you. I wish to put into nomination Esteban Carrasco.
Thank you. Esteban Carrasco. Councilor Carrasco is nominated. Are there any further nominations for council chair? Council Clements is nominated for council chair. Are there any further nominations? Any further nominations? Seeing none, nominations are now closed. I would like to take, before we take the vote, I would like to acknowledge an email that I believe we all received from Councilor Steves in regard to questions he had had or concerns, and open it up to him to ask of anyone what he would like. I would also like to address, as one of the nominees, some of what you asked in that email. Your email questioned agendas and moving forward this year and what, as a chairperson, in my case, I would like to see. I was a little perplexed by the email at first because my philosophy and as according to Robert's rules and according to the Charter and according to council rules and regs, council chair runs the meeting and represents the nine councilors, that we all nine elected officials for this community represent the people, and that we work together to move on items that would go on our agenda. The agendas are generally formed by the needs of this community, from our Town Manager, what comes forth from council subcommittee meetings, and the like. That's the way agendas should be formed. And while I find that there are very important topics in this community, economic development, for instance, businesses, we're doing some really good work in that line. We obviously have issues with roads and sidewalks and infrastructure issues. There are many, many agenda items that I see will come forward in the next year. However, it's not my place to tell you or this council what those agenda items should be. It's all of us working together. So I just want to make it clear that while I may not be able to address you in the manner that you might have liked me to say, and I know we've talked about some things ourselves before, my focus on council chair is to run a good meeting, follow parliamentary procedure, and work together with this council. And if need be, as Charter proclaims, to act for ceremonial purposes to represent the town. Other than that, we are nine elected, and I've been saying that for eight years, and I plan on continuing that philosophy on this council. Thank you.
To address the Councilor Steves' point, one of the things that I've always run when I ran four years ago was on three things, which was, number one, respect. It is my goal, if elected as council chair again, to continue to run respectful meetings, to continue to listen to the public, continue to respect them regardless if I agree or disagree with them, regardless of anything that they may have to say. I'm going to give you your attention. I'm going to look at you. I'm going to address you. I'm going to respectfully run a meeting. The second thing that I've always said is, I want to hold people accountable. And I think before we can hold anybody accountable, we have to hold ourselves accountable, and we have to hold the council accountable, our Town Manager, our department heads. It is not the role of any counselor to go after a department head. It is the role of the Town Council to go after our Town Manager. So I will continue to ask the questions as a counselor, but as a chairman, I would hold accountability across the board. And number three is unity. I think our community has tremendous strengths. I think our community has a lot to offer. And this council is a diverse council. This council is a council that has many experiences. Some might not agree with everyone, but we have a lot of education, a lot of experience on this board. And if we don't unite, and we continue to back bash, continue to backlash, go after each other, continue to have political agendas behind the scenes, we are never going to be able to accomplish what we need to and what we signed up for, which was to support and accomplish and work for the citizens of Southbridge. As a chairman, that's what I'm going to do. I don't have a private agenda. I don't have anything to lose or gain here. I'm here to serve my community, and that's what I want to do, continue to serve my community.
Council DePietro?
If I may, Council Chairman Carrasco. Assistant Council General. He's treated everyone in this council very fairly. My only reason for hoping that Council Clements would be able to step to the plate is she tends to hold all of us, the subcommittee and council, to the plate. I think she'd run a much stricter meeting, a much more informed meeting. And again, Council Carrasco, nothing against you, but we need, we need a, call it a bad guy. And I think Council Clements steps to the plate, would step up to the plate in that regard, and the reason for my nomination. Thank you.
Council Steves, is there anything you would like more since you?
I do have something I would like to say. This one vote has taken up far too much mental energy and stress for me. For something that...
Can't hear you.
Okay. Is this a little clearer now?
Yes.
Okay. What I said is that this one vote has taken up far too much mental energy and stress for me, because it's essentially, because we need to remember that the council chair is not any more powerful than the rest of us, although some people think that it is. The job is essentially ceremonial, running an effective meeting, creating the agenda based on what we all want to work on, whatever issues come up that need addressing, usually from the manager, sharing the info with all of us equally. So these are the kind of things that, you know, this has been going around for literally more than a month for me, you know? And it's even sporadically, since last year's reorganization, I've been thinking about this. You know, it's one of those situations where I know I'm going to annoy somebody whichever way I vote, and I feel like I'm trapped in the middle. I don't know how the rest of you feel, but that's how I feel. Since I don't agree with some of the things both Council Carrasco and Council Clements have said or done over the last couple of years, all I'm going to say is that I'm going to have to do what I feel is best for the community as a whole, and how this council will run most effectively, and how they do things as councilors. That's all I wanted to say.
Council McKenzie?
Thank you. I will just say this simply, I have a lot of respect for Councilor Clements, a lot of respect for Councilor Carrasco, but my feeling is this, if it isn't broke, don't fix it. It's going, as far as I can see, the year is well. It's been going well. I think that Councilor Carrasco has done a very good job in being a counselor, being the chairman, and I think that that's pretty much why I made my nomination, and I'm very happy to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Council O'Clair?
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. Just to touch a little bit on what Councilor Steve said, the council chair is, in essence, a figurehead-type position. However, the council chair sets the tone of the meetings. The council chair is the face of the community. You know, whether or not somebody comes up to the podium and is, you know, treated with respect regardless of what they're saying and what the viewpoints that they may hold are, those are things that I've seen over the past two years that I've been on the council, you know, evolve and grow in a very positive way. The council chair has intangible effects on our community in how the agendas are being driven and how, you know, the agendas are being written. I tend to disagree with what Councilor Steve has said, only in that I feel that the chair is an important figurehead and an important representation of our community and of the people of our community. And I think that that's something that we need to take into consideration. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Manna?
Thank you, Council Clements. Thank you, Council DePietro. I'm going to vote, as I have done in the past, and I'm going to vote on experience. Thank you.
Council Nash. I'm just a citizen member, and I usually call you counselor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I hope the microphone works. I'd just like to say that I'm quite pleased that we have two credible candidates to be our chairperson for 2017, 2018. They are two of the hardest-working members of this council for the last couple of years. Well, many years for Councilor Clements, along with Councilor Steves. And it's not an easy decision to make. I recognize there are folks in the audience that have a statement to make, but I will vote my conscience, and I will vote for what I believe is in the best interest of this community going forward. I look forward to serving this community as hard as I can with whoever is the chairperson. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. So the way this works for anyone who's not done it before, you will just name your nominee when your name is called, and we will have our secretary do a roll call on that.
Councilor Carrasco?
Carrasco.
Councilor Clements?
Clements.
Councilor DePietro?
Clements.
Councilor McKenzie?
Carrasco.
Councilor Manna?
Clements.
Councilor Morales?
Clements.
Councilor Nash?
Clements.
Councilor Steves?
Clements.
Councilor O'Clair?
Carrasco.
Three Carrasco, six Clements.
Thank you. We'll have order, please. We will now open the nominations for Council Vice Chair. Council McKenzie.
Thank you. I wish to put into nomination Kristin O'Clair.
Council O'Clair has been nominated for Vice Chair. Any other nominations? Council Nash?
I'll nominate Council Gus Steves.
Council Gus Steves has been nominated for Council Vice Chair. Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Seeing none, nominations are now closed. Does anybody want comment here, since we did comment on the other? I welcome that. Okay, then. Roll call, please.
Councilor Clements?
Steves.
Councilor DePietro?
Steves.
Councilor McKenzie?
O'Clair.
Councilor Manna?
Steves.
Councilor Morales?
Steves.
Councilor Nash?
Steves.
Councilor Steves?
Steves.
Councilor O'Clair?
Steves.
Councilor Carrasco?
O'Clair.
Two O'Clair, seven Steves.
Thank you. Congratulations, Vice Chairman Steves. Thank you. I know this has not been easy for anyone. We will now move on to the adoption of the permanent seating arrangements.
So if you're not familiar with this system, we will pick the, you have the little balls or the squares?
Yep, yep.
And once you're, so if you could vacate your spot now, and then once your seat is assigned, that will be your seat for the year. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I want to make my shift.
We'll take that under advisement.
Yep, so what you'll...
Well, I know, because everybody, yeah, we'll just get them though.
The one in the wind. Okay, so we'll do this alphabetically. It seems to be the easiest. So, Councilor O'Clair.
Thirteen?
Thirteen. Councilor O'Clair picked number thirteen.
Am I reading that? I think it was Council DePietro's seat.
Yes, I believe it was. Council Carrasco? Oh, there you are, sir. No peeking. Council Carrasco has picked seat number twelve. I'm going to have to mix these up a little. Council DePietro?
Mark.
Where'd he go?
Well, I know that they're, they started this.
Yeah.
So it's about right there. We're close. Let's you to one side of the...
Oh, this is a black spot. That's a bad pirate sign.
Council DePietro has picked seat number three.
Number three, you're on the other side.
Yep, so it's the third one.
In case I move a little late.
Council McKenzie? I know, it's right. Thank you. Council McKenzie has picked seat number four. Council Manna has picked seat number five. That's over here this way. Council Morales has picked seat number eleven. And last but not least, Council Nash.
Oh, is only one left? I guess I'll take six. I don't know where it is though, so can you place that?
It's, Council Nash has picked seat number six.
Is it good?
You're over here.
Next to you.
Too many people. It's usually on this side, and then you have Steve and they keep scooting.
There's number six?
It's right over here, so right next to the Vice Chair. Yep, three.
It starts over here.
Yeah, so, right, so you guys will be right next to me.
Okay.
Rick will be right next to you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
See, there are too many people on that side.
You got to fix your seat. It's the side one, ma'am.
Yes, our town somebody. It was always for the extra person. How are we doing? Is anybody finding a seat? Sometimes it's, it is, it can be that way. I remember the one year, like, everybody just switched. Remember that?
Yeah.
Kind of, I had to sit there twice so much. Okay, how are we doing?
She's moved out of the chair.
Okay, we'll wait for you, Council.
So now we're trying.
Good, how are you?
Tremendous.
Are you in my old seat and I'm in your? Oh, no, you were like one over. We almost like just smoked.
I don't know that I could fill your seat, but I'm going to try to let fill.
Start eating more carbs, you'll be good. Moving day is always exciting. So the only other thing left on this agenda is adjournment. All those in favor, hand vote. It's unanimous. We're going to take a ten-minute recess, five-minute recess or so, and then we'll come back and open up the regular meeting. This will give a chance for people to speak with their families. Here on Monday, July 10th, and we are having the forty-three seating of the council. This is following, oh, that's weird. Who wrote that on there? Look, I'm already going to make a mess. Immediately following the forty-three seating of the council organizational meeting is a Town Council meeting. And I want to welcome everybody again. First agenda item is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilor O'Clair?
Present.
Councilor Carrasco?
Present.
Councilor Clements?
Present.
Councilor DePietro?
Present.
Councilor McKenzie?
Present.
Councilor Manna?
Present.
Councilor Morales?
Present.
Councilor Nash?
Present.
Councilor Steves?
Present.
Nine present.
Thank you. Agenda item number three is to consider and accept the Town Council meeting minutes of June 19th, 2017.
Which one?
So, second.
June 19th. Okay. Any corrections, deletions?
Just note that I'll be abstaining.
Yes. Council Nash and Councilor Morales. Anybody else? Simple hand vote, all those in favor? Any, okay. Did I see Council Carrasco? Oh, sorry, I didn't see it. Okay. All right. Seven-two. Thank you. Agenda item four, considering accept the special Town Council minutes of June 28th, 2017.
So moved. Second.
Okay. Council Steves?
The only thing I want to correct is that the list under Agenda Item Number Three, I actually recalculated my numbers. It actually comes out to 3.8, not 4.39.
Got a lot of feedback going on.
Yeah. Somebody's mic is going in a weird direction. I think it might be Ryan's, actually. They're all hotlines right now, so they got to mute them right there.
Okay, are there any other corrections, deletions, abstentions?
Same.
Okay, we have the same, Council Nash and Council Morales abstaining. All those in favor? Seven, which abstentions, thank you very much. Agenda item number five, our subcommittee reports. I'll just note that we will be forming subcommittees very soon. If there is something that you are interested in being on, please let myself or Vice Chair Steves know, and we will do our best to accommodate. So I have no, I was general government, I have nothing. Does DPW?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did not...
I did not have any meetings, so I have another minutes to read. I just want to remind the citizen members, school and Counselor Nash, that the appointment does last until July thirtieth. And that's all, thank you.
Thank you for pointing that out. I'd also like to mention that if you are a citizen member and you'd like to continue or be a part of another committee, please get your interest forms in. Alright, C, Education and Human Services.
I haven't had any meetings and I have no agenda set up. However, I do want to, well, actually, well, no.
It'll take a little getting used to it.
Yes.
D is Planning and Development, that's Counselor O'Clair to my left.
There were no meeting minutes and nothing scheduled for now.
And also Protections of Persons and Property.
We did have a meeting on June twenty-second at six-thirty PM in the Veterans Room. Wow, that just got loud. In attendance were Counselor Steves, Counselor Manna, Counselor Clements, and Counselor McKenzie. Also, the Town Manager Ron Sanangelo, Police Chief Shane Woodson, and Fire Chief Mark DeFranco were in attendance. The first agenda item was to vote to accept the PPP minutes of April twenty-seventh, two thousand and seventeen. Motion was made by Counselor Clements, seconded by Counselor McKenzie, and a vote was taken three to zero, all in favor. Agenda item number two is review and discuss possibility of regional central dispatch, CRECC, and entertain a motion to vote to submit to council for ratification. Town Manager Sanangelo presented the subcommittee with three choices for our town and dispatch, or for our in-town dispatch. Option was presented as the CRECC Regional Center in Oxford. Advantages included better public safety services, upgrades to equipment, and freeing staff to take more ambulance calls to produce revenue. Disadvantages included no cost savings in the police budget, as the building will need to remain staffed in the recurrent payment to CRECC. Total recurrent cost on an annual basis to the CRECC is estimated at three hundred and thirty-five thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven dollars, and the fire department is projecting an additional two hundred and twenty-five thousand in ambulance service revenue. Total net cost would be one hundred and ten thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven per year. Option two was presented as a combination fire-police department within the town of Southbridge. Advantages included more control and involvement at the local level for training and hiring, improved public safety, minimal gaps in coverage, and more staff to the town. Disadvantages include the cost of hiring and training six new dispatchers, an increase in pay to the current lead dispatcher, and equipment costs and upgrades going forward. Total recurrent cost of the town is projected at two, between two hundred and forty thousand and three hundred and ten thousand annually for salary, not including benefits, with an estimated two hundred and twenty-five thousand from possible fire department ambulance revenue. Net cost projected to be eight, eighty-five thousand dollars per year plus benefits. Option three was presented as a way to keep services the same but add an additional four civilian dispatchers with separate police and fire operations. Advantages included police officers no longer being assigned to the desk and improved public safety service. Disadvantages included not freeing up firefighters from dispatch, and the town will be responsible for any upgrades to equipment in the future. Total recurrent cost is estimated at between one hundred and sixty and two hundred thousand dollars annually plus benefits. This option would not allow for additional ambulance revenue. Mr. Sanangelo stated that he believed the regional CRECC dispatch to be the best option to the town. Counselor Steves asked about the deadline for a decision, and Mr. Sanangelo explained that so far Oxford is the only town who has decided to opt-in. The other towns that may still join are still deliberating. Discussion ensued about Webster's potential role in the regional center. As it stands now, they are not looking to join. There were other studies between Southbridge and Webster and a regional center in the past, none of which came to fruition. It was the opinion of the police chief that they are too busy to be grouped in with Southbridge, and the call volume would be overwhelming. Chief Woodson explained that he felt the regional center was the best option for the community, so long as his police budget would remain level-funded to adequately staff for walk-in traffic and to keep the building staff to watch prisoners or pick up the business line. Counselor Manna pointed out the cost difference of thirty thousand per year with the regional center versus the local option, and asked if the money could be reserved for the equipment upgrades that the CRECC would otherwise provide. Counselor McKenzie asked about civilian dispatch training and voiced concerns over handing the operation over to civilians. Chief Woodson explained that the civilian dispatchers must complete approximately eighty hours of training before they can work the phones, and that training is not an issue. Counselor Clements asked about nine-one-one search charge funds and mentioned that we should be pushing our legislature to access that money for upgrades within our town regardless of the CRECC center. Fire Chief DeFranco explained that the nine-one-one funds are allocated to communities based on number of nine-one-one calls. Chief Woodson offered further explanation and tied it into the state, viewing regional centers as a win-win, as communities are gaining better equipment to handle calls together instead of individually. Counselor Clements pointed out the CRECC contract is effective until June twenty-twenty-two and will auto-renew every five years for twenty-five years unless a mutual agreement is made to opt back out. Counselor Steves asked about costs associated with building a new tower in town ourselves. He also asked about the lack of any escalator in the contract for the cost on an annual basis. Chief DeFranco said the town spent between fifty and sixty thousand dollars on the new tower in ten, two thousand and ten when the high school was built. Chief Woodson explained that the escalator was not factored in because the employees in the center will be union employees, and future costs will be dependent on collective bargaining agreements. The annual allocation to CRECC will base, will be based on the costs associated to run it and can change over time. The more, if more communities opt-in, the costs would decrease. If less than anticipated, often the costs could increase. Chief Woodson also explained that hiring addition, six additional people would have additional benefit costs above and beyond the projected numbers, and when asked about equipment costs, estimated to be in the forty thousand dollar range for the short term. Counselor McKenzie stated that he'd like to see us try central dispatch within the town and pursue the option of regional dispatch down the line once the center is established. Mr. Sanangelo explained that Southbridge is a key player in the regional dispatch, and if we do not join, then there is a good chance that it will not move forward at all. Counselor Manna expressed concern over the state police redirects when a person calls nine-one-one, as every second is integral in real emergency situations. Chief DeFranco explained that the next generation equipment will better redirect cell calls to the appropriate call center, and that the current issue is the inability to pinpoint where a caller is dialing from. Questions were raised about the two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar annual figure for increased ambulance revenue. The number was taken from the current amount of redirects to other ambulance centers, and assuming we could take fifty percent of those calls. And of those fifty percent of calls, perceive fifty percent of the billable revenue with consideration to patients who have no health care. Counselor Clements noticed that these figures were conservative, and the town could feasibly see more revenue for options one and two. Mr. Sanangelo explained that whatever the council decided would be implemented into the fiscal year two thousand and nineteen budget, and that losing the dispatch in the fire department would have to be collectively bargained. A motion was made by Counselor Clements to recommend voting to submit option two to the town council for ratification. A vote was taken two to one to submit to council, and the motion passed. And then Agenda Item Number Three was adjournment. Counselor Clements made the motion, and the meeting was adjourned at eight forty-six PM. Thank you.
I just have one comment, wondering, on the motion, I thought we had talked about submitting it for a show of support from council, because we weren't quite sure if we could do option two still because of the union and all those types of things. I thought that the motion had been made to, so the council would support option two, and then you would all work towards it, but I just want to be clear as to what that should be.
Yeah, I believe that, I believe that you're right in that. In my notes, I had just, you know, written that we had done that, but we had the discussion.
It's you.
Yeah, right? We had the discussion that, that we would, we would, you know, talk more about this on the council floor, but that the support from the subcommittee was option two. I'll amend that in the notes before I send it to Yvonne.
I just wanted to say that only because we're gonna end up putting it on agenda, and I want to make sure we put it on in some manner that, that makes sense. That makes sense for us to move forward with it, because if, obviously, they still have to, things have to all work out. If we just ratify option two, it doesn't, won't make sense if we can't actually implement option two, so.
Yeah, I think you're right. I'll, I'll change that.
We'll talk about that, okay. No problem. Thank you very much, very thorough. And Agenda Item Number Six is Chairman's Announcements. So, I didn't have anything planned, however, I would just like to thank everybody for their show of support, and obviously, this is something new. There will be mistakes made. I will expect my fellow counselors to point those out to me. And my Vice Chair, I look forward to working with Counselor Steves closely. I'm sure he will tell me. And obviously, if there are any items that you would like under Chairman's Announcements, at times, there are things that come up, and rather than wait till counselors form, if you want something that should be under Chairman's Announcements so that the audience is getting a chance to know what's happening in our community, please bring them forward to us, and we'll make sure that that happens. But, because again, working together in good communication is what's gonna make it key here. I would also, I'm gonna mention that I did attend the Latino Parade on June twenty-fourth. I had the privilege to walk, actually alongside of Counselor Morales, and the town manager and his family were there, along with our principal council from the, from the school. And it was a great turnout, and kudos to Counselor Estrada for a job well-executed. There were lots of people and lots of really interesting, just everything, from baton people to floats and great music, and even the rain didn't dampen the spirits, so just wanted to mention that, and thank you to the, to all who participated in the festival afterwards, the field. And that's it. Thank you. Now Town Manager's Announcements, Agenda Item Seven.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I guess I first would like to start off in congratulating our new Chair and new Vice Chairman in their new positions, and let them know that I will do my best to serve them in their capacity as I did with the previous Chairman and Vice Chairman. I also do want to mention briefly Counselor Clements' comments about the Latino Parade, Hispanic Parade. It really was a wonderful event, and what was so special about that event was, it was really designed a lot away from those people who organize events to bring this community together, and I think it was tremendously successful in doing just that. And I know that I was made to feel extremely welcome by the organizers of that parade, and I appreciate all the hard work that the committee did in putting that event together. I do want to recognize, though, our police and fire department, and frankly, not just them, but all the regional police and fire departments, or particularly police departments, that were involved in making sure that everybody had a safe day, making sure that traffic was handled appropriately. And it was amazing, because truthfully, you know, our deputy chief, for example, had planned his vacation that week, and canceled his vacation to make sure that he was there to make sure that everything ran smoothly. And a lot of police officers had no choice, they were, they had to come in for that event, and they gave up their weekends with their family, time that they might have taken off and spent a couple of days outside of town. I'm not sure that they were thrilled about it, but they did what they always do. They did their job, and they made sure that everything went very, very smoothly and very, very safely. Chief, I want to thank you, and particularly Jose, for your leadership under that role, and I know Mark was in the command center making sure everything went smoothly. You guys did a tremendous job, as always, and we appreciate your public service and what you do for this community. And with that, Madam Chairman, I thank you, and I'm all set.
Thank you very much. Agenda Item Number Eight is Swearing In and Presentations, and we do not have anything this evening. Agenda Item Nine is Citizens Forum. Is there anyone who would like to approach the council with anything that's not on the agenda? Please state your name and your address.
Okay, Maureen Doyle, seven-seven-one Lebanon Hill. So first of all, congrats, and thanks to all counselors and the town manager for past experience and future. So I'm gonna start with a quote from Henry David Thoreau. "I rejoice that there are owls," now that I have your, all of your attention. Okay, "Not only are owls neat birds in their own right as keystone species in their niche, they are objects of many cultural lessons. In Asian philosophies, the owl is an example of many beneficial attributes." And I encourage you to embrace those in your decisions about the town and about our local ecosystem. I made these crude owls. Crude, not because they're rude, but because they're, they're not anatomically correct or anything. They're kind of cutesy. As a reminder, to remember those things, as town counselors, look at issues long-term and consider aspects beyond the immediate economic ones. Counselors each receive a copy of Robert's Rules of Order, which is great for how to run a meeting, but this book, The Way of the Owl, should be the companion book. It's the same size, see? It looks great, together. Because it addresses how to think and consider things in a meeting. And it's called The Way of the Owl: Succeeding with Integrity in a Conflicted World by Frank Rivers. And I'll try to get you all copies, but I don't know if I can. In lieu of a copy, please take an owl and put it somewhere to be reminded that the owl of the owl attributes. Like in that little open space, you can put it in there, and we'll tell Joel, is Joel or Jamie, whichever one, to leave them there when he cleans. It's also thin enough to use as a bookmark. And I want this to just be a reminder to you to make wise decisions. The owl can represent the balance between two extremes. The owl respects its surroundings, on which she depends for life, for food, shelter, and water. She surveys the scene completely, swiveling her head around. As humans, we can't do that, but we do have the ability to look forward and back in history and to have foresight, and that can help us in the present. So, "May you have courage to stand up for good ideas and to observe. Don't go with your first thought about an issue. Listen and ask for clarification. Asking questions is a sign of intelligence and respect. Don't be afraid to change your mind in light of new evidence. That too is intelligence, not weakness. Like an owl, you need to look at issues with a bird's eye view, looking at the panoramic scene and all the creatures within." Lastly, the smaller the ego, the less it, oh, whoops, blocks the vision and creativity of a solution. The owl doesn't need to rule the forest to thrive in it. So I encourage you, as a council, to focus on what you collectively do want, not on what you don't want. What do we want for the town? Question one in our recent town election clearly shows that Southbridge does want a dump-free future. And I'll remind everyone that this is the second ballot question that showed, that showed this. The first one being in the late nineteen nineties, I'm not sure of the exact date. Those ballot questions need to be respected, and all people, citizens and counselors alike, need to respect each other when expressing their views. So let's start this year off right with respect all around. Thanks, and best of luck to you all, and remember the way of the owl. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak to the council?
Good evening, new council. Kevin Buxton, twenty-eight Columbus Avenue. Most of you know me, to the new counselors. You'll get to know me. I try to be here more often than most people like. There's not a lot I can say. I've seen a lot of councils. I've seen a lot of councils come and go over the years. I've had various interactions with the town council, and in recent years, it's been better than in previous years, where it was kind of difficult to break the shell. I think this council is, over the last, say, three cycles, or the last ten years, is, is really opened up more to citizens. You can only open up so much, because one, my, one of my concerns is the fact is, we never see a lot of citizens here, and I'm sorry to see that. I actually saw a post today on social media of somebody who said, "Well, we elect you counselors, and the council hires the town managers, and at that point there, we don't have any say in what goes on." That somehow we give you power of attorney over us, and we're no longer needed to come up here and voice our opinions. We're, we've given away that with the town council, former government. I've never been an advocate of that, obviously, otherwise I wouldn't have been here. And I really wish people would change their way of thinking. We've seen with the newest federal administration, a lot of people coming out and voicing their opinions in demonstrations in Washington, and visiting office hours for their representatives and their senators, and it's, it's, it's grown incredibly. And I myself have attended Representative Durant's office hours here in this building when he has them, and it's a situation where a lot of people, you know, rush out to vote for the president or maybe a senator, but they don't seem to realize that you can get impact, influence, and, and actually some satisfaction of working with the council and with subcommittees and various... various boards. I know there'll be a lot of citizen members of subcommittees being sought out, and I encourage people to get involved. I myself have kind of chose my own niche, which is sad to say, Board of Health and Landfill Oversight, and especially recycling. And, you know, I brought my say no on question one sign today, and it will return to other council meetings. And I didn't come up here last month and shove in the face that, hey, the citizens have voiced their opinion, and, and now you need to move forward. Paul Zotos kind of said, okay, what are you going to do? And that is not easily manipulated. But we do have progress forward, and we need to continue it. I encourage anybody available, Thursday night, Thursday night, we're having our first LOC Landfill Oversight Committee in a long time, and followed by a Board of Health meeting. It's still a very hot subject in this town, and we still need people involved and people educating themselves in the, in the subject. And please, if you're available Thursday night, please show up here at the Town Hall and see what it's all about. Congratulations to the new council and look forward to working with you. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else who would like to approach the council?
Thomas Ayaw, out of 35 Beach Street. And just so happened, as I was leaving Beach Street this afternoon, or whenever I was leaving, I was on Litchfield Avenue, you know, there's an intersection, you know, Beach intersects Litchfield at the top of my hill. So there's a couple DPW guys filling in potholes. And I, I just turned the corner going to South, you know, and going, yeah, okay. Then I thought about it. I mean, I'm halfway down to South Street, and I says, I got to talk to these guys. I backed my car up. I mean, you know, I'm glad nobody caught me. I had my four ways on, but, you know, and there was nobody coming, all right? So I backed my car up to talk to the, the crew that was, the two guys. I said, for real? You guys doing patchwork? You know, and they were doing it in a gutter, you know, the, the side of the street. I mean, you know, as much as I appreciate the effort, I don't quite get it about if it's actually going to work, you know? Hey, we see that, come on. How long does coal patch work? A week? Two weeks? I don't know. I mean, we talk about an embarrassment, all right? What's an embarrassment? I mean, where, where shouldn't you fixing? Dresser Street, right? I mean, for real, coming down the hill, down here, I go, whoa, this is amazing. I, I, I have another side to this, and it's kind of interesting. I forgot, I forgot, one of the guys, one of the yellow shirt people, the DPW guys volunteered, oh, yeah, what about West Street? I go, oh, yeah, what about West Street? It's like, you know, I ride a bicycle sometimes in this town, and, yeah, I take my life in my hands just negotiating the city streets. It's like, what? Yeah, but that's all right. You know, that's part of the routine as a bicyclist or whatever. As a car, you know, hey, I got shock absorbers, there's cushy tires, there's, whatever. It's, they're going to do their job. And in a way, I don't mind bad streets because it slows the traffic down. I mean, wow. I hate to think that, you know, we got nice paved streets and people are going to be zipping on those nicely paved streets. So, you know, there's a dilemma there. Yeah, do we pave the streets nicely so that people can zip around? Or do we, I don't know, live with what we got, which is, you know, really, you know, and I know, there's no money. I understand. Hey, it's all about the money. Hey, just write me a check and, or write, you know, the town a check. Problem solved. But, yeah, that's all I got to say. I just bewildered that, wow, yeah, I just see it right. You know, I know what happens because I, I come back after the fact and I see, oh, look, they, they fill in these potholes or whatever. And it's, yeah. But, you know, how long is it going to last? Really, put some effort into getting some really paved, if you're really interested. I mean, if you're really interested in paved streets or smooth streets or, yeah, but, I'm sorry, but coal patching isn't going to hack it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else, any other citizen members who would like to approach the council? Seeing none, we're going to move on. Agenda item number 10. Vote to confirm the reappointment of Kathleen Shields as Animal Inspector for a one-year term effective May 1st, 2017 through April 30th, 2018 in accordance with M DAR certification, Massachusetts Department of Agriculture.
Second.
Any discussion? We're going to do this as a hand vote. All those in favor? It's unanimous of nine. Thank you.
Yeah, he did. It's okay. Keep my right side. Thanks.
Agenda item number 11. Vote to confirm the reappointment of Kathleen Shields as Animal Control Officer for a one-year term effective July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Unanimous by all, present, nine. Okay, Agenda item number 12, Counselors' Forum. We're going to start with Councilor Claire.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you, just going to keep it super short. Congratulations to Counselor Nash. Congratulations to Counselor Morales. It's, it's really great to see, you know, two new faces up here. And obviously, congratulations to Counselor Steves for your reelection and also the Vice Chair. Congratulations to Counselor Clements as Chair. I'm looking forward to working with all of you over the next year and, and continuing to make progress. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Carrasco.
Yes, just briefly also, I want to just congratulate the new councilors, those elected in position. Congratulations. There's still a lot of work that needs to be done, so let's get to work. And then I just want to really thank Counselor Estrada and his crew, Olympus Service Organization, for doing a tremendous job with the parade. I was not part of the parade aspect of it, but I did, was able to come into town later since I was out of the state. But it was a great event. And I just want to kind of just correct some of the language that was said earlier. It wasn't interesting. It was culture. It was literally what you saw out there was culture. A lot of people with pride, a lot of people really demonstrating what culture is all about. So, you know, you know, some have asked, you know, when's the Italian festival? When's the Greek? Well, last week, I believe it was the Greek festival, you know, yesterday. So, you know, this was great for the Hispanic community, seeing that we are 40% of this community, that to be able to just have one day to celebrate. You know, many years ago, St. Mary's Church, before it combined, was the, the host of a Hispanic festival. And when the merger happened, it kind of just became an international festival. So it, it was something great to see. I've seen videos. It was great to see a, a local hero for many, Felix Tito Trinidad, come to our small community and just really enjoy his time here. If you know some celebrities and you know sometimes, you know, they're on a clock schedule. They, they, they're going to show up, they're going to do their thing, say hi to a couple people and leave. But Mr. Trinidad stayed. He made sure every little boy that came up with something, had something signed. And not only that, he, he was at a local restaurant after, took pictures. He, he really enjoyed his time here in Southbridge, and he spoke highly of our community. So kudos to all those involved. Again, yeah, thank you to Police Department and the Fire Department and those that participated. But I, I just really want to give a shout out publicly to Counselor Estrada and his group that did an excellent, excellent job bringing this forward to our community. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Counselor Morales.
Good evening. Thank you. I just want to thank the community for your support on June's elections. I just want to congratulate Counselor Nash and Counselor Steves Clements. I hope we can work together this year and make the difference in our community. Thank you.
Mover to Counselor DePietro.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My congrats to newly elected Counselor Morales, Counselor Nash. Look very forward to working with you. And to you, Madam Chair, and to you, Mr. Vice Chair. Sitting in this chair, which is very uncomfortable, and I plan to change it when no one's looking, sitting on this side of the room, the acoustics, and somebody's going to agree with you, are absolutely terrible. I have the hardest time, and I'm very interested in hearing what every counselor has to say, and I'm getting half of it. Am I the only one?
We hear you well.
I hear you okay. It's, it's terrible, and I'm wondering if we could think about a speaker system or something here. I mean, absolutely terrible. But thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor DePietro. Counselor McKenzie.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman. I would, first of all, again, as everyone else has done, I would like to congratulate and welcome Counselor Morales and Counselor Nash. Also, congratulations to Counselor Steves, Vice Chairman, for being reelected and to be Vice Chair. Congratulations to Chair, Chairlady Clements, is that correct?
Chairman is fine.
Chairman? Okay, thank you. Chairman. And I'm, I'm very happy that this all worked out well. I'd like to read something, if I may, that I prepared. It's going to be relatively brief, but please bear with me. While I was campaigning for the office of Town Counselor a year ago, people would ask me why I was running. I told them I loved Southbridge and wanted to give back to my community, and to serve my town was a way for me to give back. Lately, I've been thinking about the word "serve," and I have come to the following conclusion. According to the New World Dictionary, to serve means many things. One, to work for as a servant, to do services or duties for, to give services. Two, to aid, to assist, and to help. Also, to give obedience and reverence and honor to God. At the beginning of each Town Council meeting, we all stand and say the Pledge of Oligations. In that pledge are the words, "One nation under God." Still, the concept of honoring God is not a foreign one to the public servants. Two questions came to my mind. What qualities should a servant have? And two, how should servants conduct themselves? After much thought on these questions, these are the qualities I believe a civil servant should display. They should be humble, reverent, kind, selfless, obedient, considerate, respectful, caring, helpful, amiable, good listeners, well-prepared, peaceful, conscientious, friendly, open-minded, enthusiastic, trustworthy, loyal, sympathetic, and sensitive. I then had to take stock of my own self in these areas. I also asked my fellow councilors to do the same in their leisure. I had to examine myself and ask, do I look to serve my own interests, or do I look to serve to put the town first and serve them? As we now approach a new year of service to our community, I ask that we look to work in harmony together and with a strong sense of respect for one another. I ask that we, as councilors, always look to put the interests of the town of Southbridge and its people first in all matters pertaining to our town government. As Abraham Lincoln so aptly stated in his Gettysburg, Gettysburg Address, "We are a government of the people, by the people, and for the people." Thank you.
Counselor Manna.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you. I, too, would like to congratulate Counselor Nash and Counselor Morales on their swearing in and their first night here of Town Council. Welcome. Again, congratulations to Counselor Steves and also on the Vice Chairmanship. I'd like to also congratulate Counselor Clements on the Chairmanship. And I look forward to the new fiscal year. Thank you.
Counselor Nash.
Thank you. Madam Chair, through you. Sometimes I ramble, so tonight I'll try to be a little more abbreviated than other times. First of all, thank you to the citizens of Southbridge for a great turnout at our election. I know that was stated at the last council meeting, but since it impacted myself, Counselor Steves, and Counselor Morales in particular, I'm grateful. I hope that we, as a council, continue to instill confidence and show and demonstrate progress for our community. I had a couple other quick things I just wanted to mention. I was reminded of something tonight, and it relates to citizen involvement. Counselor Manna earlier mentioned subcommittees. It may have been said once or twice beyond that. Citizens are always needed to fill spots within boards, commissions, and subcommittees in our town. I'll ask everybody I see if I have to until all those positions are filled. I had the privilege of serving in a couple of capacities, but I also wanted to point out that when it comes to citizen involvement beyond being in an appointed position, you can have an impact. It's not just showing up at Town Council meetings and going to the podium to address the council. I'll give a lot of credit last year to the Town Manager and in particular, my colleague and friend, Counselor Manna, for, for her support of something that I pushed for just from being a regular resident. And that was for the annual report that the Town Manager and his department heads created. A lot of folks thought that was pretty simple and trivial, but we hadn't had one since 2003. I looked to that and say, that was a big accomplishment. We didn't highlight enough. I'd love to see it expanded this year. The Town Manager and I can talk at length a little later on at some point if we need to, but it is in our bylaws, and I think it's Bylaw 2-106 that we need to have an annual report. But just as an example, I took that on. I didn't do a lot of work, but I leaned on Counselor Manna, and she helped me to find the references that we needed. And the Town Manager was more than gracious to help make that happen. So thank you for that. Hope to see the one for 2017 in the near future. So I can't emphasize enough, please, if you have any concerns, please always feel free to reach out to your councilors first. The Town Manager's door is always open. I know that. I know that sometimes we prefer that citizens go through the elected officials, but Ron's a really easygoing guy to speak with. He does a fantastic job in this community. I was very pleased to see the ultimate result of his evaluation. So I'll get off that pulpit and move on to one last thing. There's a wealth of information on our webpage for the town of Southbridge. Please visit it once in a while. There are agendas, there are some minutes, but what's more, I'll point out that the schedule for the Council on the Common is up there. I love going down there when I'm home on Sunday nights. And last night, Joyco was fantastic, as they are every year. It's a free event. If you have any interest in getting out on a Sunday afternoon, please keep something like that. It's great to see good members of the community get out and socialize and have a couple of laughs and enjoy some entertainment and see the kids dance. I had the pleasure last night of chatting with a good friend during the course of those events, and Steve Rowenfeld does a great job in that capacity, I'll just point out. So with that, I'm glad to be part of this council. We have fantastic representatives for this community, and I look forward to a fantastic 2017, 2018. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Counselor Steves.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of quick things. First of all, I want to say thank you to everybody who did vote for me. And whether you agreed with my vote for Counselor Clements or not, I'm still here to serve the couple, the public. And we are going to continue to do things, to focus on the things that need to get done. And one of those things for me is going to be dealing with the landfill issue. That's not going to change. Huh? I said, one of those things is going to be coming up with something concrete to deal with the landfill issue. That's not going to change. But otherwise, I also want to point out that for the next month or so, things are going to be kind of slow, obviously, for the next, during the summer it usually is. So I know I wanted to, I wanted to see if we could start doing some little workshops on things like Robert's Rules and, and doing stuff to get, get people up and running fairly quickly about how, how the council actually operates and those kinds of basic things. And also, I was thinking on the idea of going forward... And also, I was thinking on the idea of going forward, this is just kind of wonky internally, but maybe we can take these subcommittee reports and break them up within the agenda items, as opposed to talking about them for 45 minutes at the beginning of the meeting. When something comes up, say, in general government, that would be relevant to, say, Agenda Item Number 17 or whatever. Just an idea, just an idea to think about. Other than that, also I want to say congratulations to Counselor Nash and Counselor Morales, and to you, Madam Chair, for your election, and thank you for supporting me for Vice Chair. And that's it.
I'll comment since you meant, as far as that goes, the minutes do get long, and I certainly think that we could, as is allowed legally, to consolidate more and just to give a synopsis of what got discussed. They're always available to the public, either in-house or online as they get put on. Certainly, that's something we can bring up for discussion in whatever, if council wants to consolidate those minutes and read something smaller, condense that, that's fine. Or as you said, make a comment during discussion during a vote period also. Either way, I mean, that's something that, you know, we can certainly discuss and come up with as a group, as a policy, or, you know, I've done that occasionally, tried to condense four pages, but certainly, whatever works best to get the town's business done. All right. So next meeting date.
It's not listed, but I would assume it's going to be Monday, the 24th, here in the council chambers.
Sounds good.
The 24th? I'm assuming it's not listed on our agenda.
Right, that would be in two weeks, so it'd be Monday, the 24th, 7 o'clock. And we will work towards more meeting dates, and so we can have a lineup for everybody so you can plan your schedules going forward. As I said, we'll work on subcommittees and move from there. So at this point, we're going to vote to enter into executive session according to the Mass General Law's C30A, Section 21A, to conduct strategy session in preparation for contract negotiations with non-union personnel, and if the chair so declares, return to open forum to vote and adjourn. So that will be a roll call. Turn motion second.
Some of. Second. Counselor DePietro?
Yes.
Counselor McKenzie?
Yes.
Counselor Manah?
Yes.
Counselor Morales?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor O'Clare?
Yes.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Nine yes.
We shall return. So you let me know? Welcome back to the town council meeting. Roll call, please.
Counselor O'Clare?
Present.
Counselor Carrasco?
Present.
Counselor Clements?
Present.
Counselor DePietro?
Present.
Counselor McKenzie?
Present.
Counselor Manah?
Present.
Counselor Morales?
Present.
Counselor Nash?
Present.
Counselor Steves?
Present.
Nine present.
Yes.
I make a motion that we ratify the employment agreement between the county of Southbridge and Karen Heinrich, Town Accountant and Finance Director, effective August 25th, 2017 through August 24th, 2022.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. We'll do a roll call on this.
Counselor DePietro?
Yes.
Counselor McKenzie?
Yes.
Counselor Manah?
Yes.
Counselor Morales?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Definitely yes.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Counselor O'Clare?
Yes.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Nine yes.
Motion. Caris, nine yes.
I also move to confirm the reappointment of Karen Heinrich as Town Accountant and Finance Director for a five-year term effective August 25th, 2017 through August 24th, 2022. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call on this council.
Counselor McKenzie?
Yes.
Counselor Manah?
Yes.
Counselor Morales?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor O'Clare?
Yes.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Counselor DePietro?
Yes.
Nine yes.
Nine yes, motion. Welcome for another five years.
Thank you.
Take motion to adjourn. So move.
Second.
All in favor? Can vote. Oops, we're missing one. Let's try that.
Are you going to vote? Have Carrasco to adjourn.
Counselor Carrasco?
Unanimous by all, present. Thank you very much.
We're stuck here for all of them.